There's three levels, I believe, John Krasch might have come here. There's three levels of tax credit. The bottom one, I don't think our residents will put up with. So that's the way, most effective way to get affordable housing is to help us get the most money. But the top one is like sixty percent or something like that of town meeting, I don't remember. But now they have this other level of like, they don't have tax credits for necessarily all the towns trying. But it's called workforce housing. When I was a city, Nandell, that is what we were targeting with our developers. Because that was a level of teachers of, you know, until you understand the brackets of affordable housing, when we get into that discussion, it's really hard to say, do you want affordable housing? I think the housing community did a great job, but that conversation needs to be a little more in depth. And I think that our planning directors can help us.
Can I take a little, we're in the incentives, but a couple of slides and I've got different barriers to why development's not occurring.
Let's keep moving.
Yeah, we got five minutes. Well, we don't have all night to put it down.
Well, you know, again, you're on opposite spectrums. If you are using incentives, you know, so you choose to maximize the use of them. You try to do as much as you can. And that goes to, if you're getting the development you want, you're getting everything you want. You could layer on the different things. It might be where you want, maybe the type of development you want. They might be putting in sidewalks, whatever those objectives are. So you might be willing to maximize the use of whatever tools you have because you feel like you're getting more. Or else you try to minimize it. If it's a twenty-year life, how do I keep it down to ten years? And these again are objectives of balancing with your tax base of how you want to use them. But, so I think the next slide. So I wanted to come here because I think it's, there's a listing here of what drives the gap or potentially a need for public assistance. And again, you know, these are priority decisions. You have to decide if this is what you believe is driving the gap. But one is you might have extraordinary redevelopment costs. So if you do side-by-side comparisons of having to buy a lighted building, demo it, that's going to cost more than if you're building on greenfield development. Unless, of course, that greenfield development doesn't have any utilities. So then you have to go to, we have to oversize utilities and the infrastructure needs because we have future growth that we have to incorporate. Again, those might be driving, or those might be barriers to why the development's not occurring. You could have a holdout property owner, land prices too high. Is that your deal? Is that why, is that how you want to choose to use your incentives? Most communities say no, because if you incent one holdout property owner, you're going to incent everyone. It drives up the cost of doing development. Again, these are priority decisions, but perhaps that holdout property owner is in your targeted area of what you want to see redeveloped. So I think part of this discussion is setting your priorities for, you know, what values you have, how you might want to use your tools, but it's also location. And maybe all, you know, if you target one or two areas, you mentioned a couple of potential areas. So perhaps you'd be willing to invest in a particular area because that's your priority for seeing redevelopment or new development occurring. Do you, is the developer wanting less risk and more return than what the typical market states? Is that a reason why you want to choose to participate? If you're in small town USA where you get one developer every fifteen years, you're probably going to roll up the red carpet and subsidize the market. And that's not trying to be mean, but they don't have a lot of development. So in that case, you have to minimize their risk because they won't, well, you can choose to or you can choose not to because maybe they won't build and maybe you really need them to. Again, these are all policy decisions of, some of them, you can, you can do the financial, understand there's extraordinary costs if you do side-by-side comparisons. That's part of that but for with and without assistance. Some of these are more subjective, market competition, less risk. And those are, those are harder to quantify and harder to participate in if you're in a community that is resistant on using incentives. The only reason I want to bring this up is you're not there yet. But when you're looking at development, this is, it's a matrix. And I apologize for those on the phone, but when you're analyzing projects and understanding your level of participation and why you want to choose these different types of projects, it's a balance of the confidence level and how much analysis and due diligence you want to do on that project. So a high confidence for success generally is a low sensitivity as opposed to if you have a low confidence for that project, so you rely on due diligence, high sensitivity analysis on that. And this really comes into how you're analyzing a public participation, financial request of the likelihood of success for that project.
Are you talking about rate return? Like is the rate return helpful?
I'm, the, it can be, well, it's, for one, it's, if you're, it goes back to how, if you choose to participate financially and you, the community chooses to participate financially in a project, how much they're asking for and what type of risk is potentially on the line for the community of how much the buildings.
So my example is, tell me if I'm right, this is what you mean. Like the average is fourteen percent or fourteen sixteen out of the rate return. But if it has a high risk, like match markets, you could go higher, eager rate return. You could allow a higher rate of return to the risk. Is that what you're saying?
You could view it that way. I was more looking at if, in that example, they had come to the villages and we need you. I mean, it goes back to managing, or it goes back to the managing the risk. And in this case, it was more if, in that project, they had come to the village and said, we, we can't get financing, would you issue debt for this project? Which could be viewed as higher risk than if you just issued them a reimbursement, you know, Pago, no reimbursement for costs. So it's a higher level of due diligence to, again, understand their need, which drives to their rate return. But also, how, how do we mitigate the public's risk for investing in that project? I'm not going to go any further because this was just kind of definition of tax increment financing. I think everyone is familiar with that, but I think those are all the, well, I think a couple more if you... I don't know what happened. Okay. That's another language, I guess. That's an eight o'clock language. That's what you want.
Inspiration.
Right. You know, this is, yeah. Well, the only purpose I wanted to bring it up is, you know, why you use incentives is you're trying to, you're trying to deal with what the current status of that property is and not necessarily the, I mean, obviously, it's all a package of the current condition and the vertical, but really trying to focus on financing, getting the, to, even playing field is what a lot of folks are trying to say is why you're trying to use that incentive. And again, it goes back to what the barriers are and what your objectives are. Do you even care for what those barriers are? So it might not be your target area, might not be your target development. Who cares what the barriers are? But if they are, then you might choose to try to even out the playing field, if you will.
Can I, if you're getting on, looking for the CDA other side too. There's two types of tips, like, did we talk about this? There's the proactive pool where the government doesn't need an area where, like the parky, like people proactively pay for downtown for a riverwalk or for certain types of development to occur here, or, you know, public good or whatever. Then there is the reactive, which is when the developer comes to you with a proposal and it doesn't mean a rate of return. We always separate those out at the city because the two different policies is, in a sense, because what you're saying is when the developer comes and says, you know, well, sure, you'd like to see X, Y, Z, and there's a proposal, but now you investigate by doing, like, for match markets, they did fifty-two or forty-eight runs of scenarios because it was a little risky. And rate return was higher. But that wasn't, you know, like there's difference between, like the corridor, like the kids use CDA all the time, like they ask the village to in bigger cities where you're going to redevelop capital drive and you want to be strategic and so you're going to put in tips. So a developer comes, helps you to that, that's like an initiative? And that's, I think what you're asking us, is like, do you want to proactively have an initiative to do something somewhere, like a riverwalk program or, you know, or do you want to, when the developer asks?
So President Rosa, I had, I had in my notes actually highlighted that there are two approaches. And I don't think they necessarily have to be completely segregated, but right, you have proactive versus reactive. And I think you could still have similar, so proactive might be because you have a targeted area that you want to gain more. So it really comes down to the aggressive nature of the community and how aggressive you want to be in facilitating development and redevelopment. And if you're more aggressive, then you, the community might take a more proactive approach. And that's where you have a specific area. You know, and it comes down to if you're in the business of acquiring properties when they become for sale because you're trying to assemble a site for possible redevelopment, you're going to be more proactive as opposed to reacting when a developer comes in. But you could still have the same objectives and priorities if you're being reactive or proactive. And I think it helps kind of, and I think as Art mentioned earlier, you know, providing the, I'm not using the right word right now, but the lanes or the, you know, the guidelines for which a developer coming in knows to work within. So the lanes have a, take a bowling ball, that's all I can see in my head. And the bumper's going down. So they understand sort of what they, what they have to work with or not work with, what, including laying out the views objectives to the extent you know. And I know there's lots of areas of gray, but it helps to kind of define that if you're being really reactive, but also if you're taking that more proactive approach. Since we're at eight o'clock, I don't know what, if it's the will of the group to continue going towards the end or I just need to make some arrangements. If it's the will of the group to continue.
From a planning perspective, what would you say we have left to accomplish ideally?
First, we're going to take a break. Yeah, a while back. And second, we're going to come back and talk about and try to extract what you all thought were some of the priorities and see if we could develop consensus on what some of the priorities with the economic development side of things, the commercial economic development side of things as well as the housing. And both from a policy standpoint of, you know, trying to, trying to move forward and identify what to do some more research and assessment on as well as possible criteria and possible steps to consider next.
That sounds like way too much to accomplish, Charlie.
Well, do we want to try to narrow it down to some themes that we can get some more information together on?
I'd have to, I'd ask the group what you feel ready to do.
I hate to start and then cut it off, but that seems like a huge amount of work.
Well, I think we could, you know, go around and just sort of say for, you know, what, what we're feeling when we would support, like, do we support subsidies and what type of thing would we support? And then on housing, like, what are top priorities among housing? Maybe we could go around and say that. We don't have to get into a lot of back and forth. We can just.
Yeah. Are we talking about, this is kind of one of my, are we talking about economic incentives in general? Or are we talking about more related to housing?
It's both.
Both.
It's, so, but it's, it's to help define, the goal of this is to come about.
Let me back up. At how the real estate development, are we talking about basically just real estate development here?
In the commercial district or in the...
At all? Or are we, I mean, is that, is that what we're...
Your job creation? What do you mean?
Well, that's what I mean.
That's what I mean. Like, what are we, are we talking about job creation? Are we talking about quality of life? Are we talking about diversity socially? Are we talking, I mean, I don't know what exactly we're talking about. We're talking about everything. And then again, and then again, we don't have enough time tonight to go into it.
The purposes they have, if I could, if I could add, the, so the end result down here is to have a set, policy sometimes is a strong word because, but a set of guidelines or policy, whatever terminology you want to use. But it's a set of guidelines for how the village wants to proceed with development, real estate development. So within that are, again, identifying the different types of, whether it's, and so typically what it is is you establish what your public purpose objectives are because then that ties to how you want to potentially participate. So really what it comes down to is you identify your policies and objectives and goals. So how you can decide how you want to participate in development. You can decide, I'm only participating in development. And so if the developer comes in, I'm only participating because it meets one of the... You can go as far as creating rating score charts, scorecards where you can score projects as they come in and say, do they meet our policy priorities and objectives? And that's where you establish that criterion. That's not tonight, but tonight, if you can start to think about what your objectives are. This sounds like what's, if we went around and in addition to trustee Amundt's two questions, the third question would be, what's your top one or two public purpose?
That's where I think we're...
We could start, we could add.
We need agreement to start driving everything.
So maybe we could go around one at a time to top public purpose.
Because that will drive, that will drive the types of development based on your, should filter down into the types of development.
Do you think that's a fair thing to try to do? And again, I like that idea, but it's not a back and forth debate because we know rhyme answer. It's just to get the...
To just get into our mix and goal.
Yeah, okay.
So public purpose. Going back to, right, so these public purposes. So of those, I don't know, back to the first one. Do you guys want more than one to choose? Do you want one, two, or...
The first four of your slides.
Well, I, okay, so one that I can throw out there is maintaining, that one that came up in here was the historic buildings. And, you know, that's the charm of Shorewood is that we have, well, the buildings are historic buildings. So that's definitely one that...
Public purpose. Our objective is...
We can, we only, I think, I think we can mostly agree on that one, right?
Our objective, one objective is to maintain the historic nature.
Yes, keep the charm.
I think is another one, what we sort of read on before I thought was, we get the desire to have Shorewood be a diverse...
Objective is to be a diverse.
Economically.
Economically diverse.
Socially.
Socially, ideally economically, socially, racially diverse community.
Okay, great. Tess?
I would like to see rules in place so developers have the ability to look at the village overall and create projects that are within their expertise. So if they know that they can come in and take a parcel, whether it's one house, five homes, an apartment building, raise it, put something else in that suits the needs of the general public.
So they know the rules of the road.
So they know the rules of the road. So that all goes back to zoning too. But our zoning codes are old. The uses for our real estate are limited based on...
So an objective would be to diversify our zoning codes and land use?
Yes.
Would be your top interest? John Krasch?
I remember him.
Anybody on the phone?
Yeah. Um, I think the value, based on the market study from housing is senior housing or housing, that we can provide them with the options that they want so they can live their life in Shorewood to the end. And that frees up some housing stock for families without pushing them out to suffer where they may not want to go. So I think that's top priority based on market study. And then the second thing that I would say is, I believe, even if we're talking about just real estate, I think that we should not be focusing on real estate. I said this when I became president because we've done a lot of that. But our community also values the businesses. And so working with our partner in the big community to find programs to help the actual businesses, maintain the businesses, small businesses. And that is something totally different. That's like home guarantees and other types of incentives that we haven't talked about. But those would be high competitive.
Can I ask, Claire, this is Michaela. Are you thinking more small business or entrepreneurial, you know?
So I think our community values that. And right now, retail is struggling all around the nation. So why don't we need a market study, use margin corridor to say, what does our local shopping power provide? You know, what is our dollar for five here? So that we know if people want a hardware store and our local buying power will support it, then we wouldn't waste our effort to try and fund a real estate development to accommodate that when the business itself is going to fail. So there are some businesses, the market study, that would show like your community's dollar will support this. And then how would we maintain or get those mechanisms? Usually, that would be through like different programs that are not locally distributed.
So I think it's sort of local.
That's true. I would focus CDA and also on senior housing, that's the termal, because if you did that housing study, people want to stay here and we also need more housing stock. So between those two things. And the third one would be workforce housing. So if you do have a luxury housing development and someone wants to put money into it, we're lacking that middle, we have a, wait, a six hundred for twelve units or something like that in the light worst. So if you whoopie the data, it'll say, you know, there's six hundred people waiting in that middle room for twelve units. So it's definitely a desire to have that energy.
Trustee Maher?
Nope, I didn't.
Oh, John Krasch.
Okay, I don't know if I have a public purpose to put on the list, but here's what I kept writing down. Everything else depends on people living here spending money. And we, according, based on what I've seen in the housing study and just anecdotally, we need more housing if we want more people to live here. We have virtually zero vacancy rates. We have opportunities. We have opportunities, I think, to build more housing. I don't know if the village has the appetite to build the type of housing some people want to see. And I don't know if we have the appetite to build a density of housing that will really make a difference. This is what I keep coming back to. I feel like maybe we're nipping around the edges. But if we build a hundred more units, five hundred more units, is that going to change much of anything? Probably not. My gut is, we need to be talking about thousands of units to make any significant increase in the ability to support a lot more business in this area. Certainly, if you have a mix of people, that's great socially and it creates a really nice community to live in. But you've got to have a place to put these people who want to live here. And if we've got people who are earning, you know, a lot more money than the minimum, the, I forget what it's called. Affordable. The, if you have people living in affordable, quote unquote, affordable housing that don't need it, that obviously shows that we just don't have enough housing here. So to me, this all comes back to housing. It really, you can't do much of anything. You can't support, because I, I don't believe you're going to have a lot of people coming from very far away to visit businesses in the village of Shorewood. It's just not.
Exactly.
It's not convenient, plus they're going to pass these same businesses five times on their way here. So unless you drop a thousand, two thousand, three thousand more people in this village, you're not going to support five more restaurants. You're not going to support two farmers markets. You're not going to, I mean, you're just not going to be able to support that unless, of course, the other way you might be able to do it is if everyone here earns twice as much that's living there. You know, but then we have a economically diverse, diversity, economic diversity problem.
And that would be higher density, higher income levels that would tend to drive more retail, commercial.
So I guess what I'm trying to say, this is a very long...
Turn it into one of those.
Yeah, so.
Create a jury of public actions?
I agree with a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's a, it's, but I don't know if it's a, it's a variety of housing options. It's just more housing options.
Is it stable, I mean, it's, part of it is stable community, right? I mean, it's, it's you have, you have, your business stock is doing well because you have enough people that are invested in your community.
And you have the people, and you have some people here who can afford to support the business community. I mean, that part of it.
We don't have me taking my hospital leave either, so restaurants struggle.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you want to, so objective, it sounds like what you're saying is you want to increase, you...
Increase, well, we definitely increase the number of housing units.
Yes, the number of housing units significantly.
More homes, so that.
I have a...
Any amount, I think, is good, but if we're, if we want to see any major increase in all the other stuff.
That people are expressing interest in.
Yeah, approving a thirty-unit apartment building on a basement lot on Oakland isn't going to do it.
Okay, nicely, okay. So that's your objective. Trustee Maher?
Yeah, I'm still on, sorry, I believe the immediate issues are the things, the projects that we have still pending. And I, I don't know if I want to drop a couple thousand more people into the village and what that would do to the nature of our community. I don't know if we should also be, if we can't support twenty coffee shops, maybe we just don't need that many coffee shops. I mean, I don't know if I'd let that. I think seeing affordable, senior accessible housing would be a good project that, to facilitate people staying in the community and also bring up that housing for families that come in, they come into the community. And also the turnover of houses so the housing stock continues to operate. So we keep our high top housing stock in good shape. Also, there was a comment about packing off on inspections and stuff. I think that's the one way to go at this point. I think we need to promote improving our property. I thought it might be smart.
That was an individual or, or an individual group's comment. It wasn't reflective of a lot of consensus.
Trustee Maher, this is Peter. Can I just, clarity on your, on your first point, are you, were you saying we still have some sort of target sites that have not been addressed? And so your, your public purpose is to be intentional and proactive in addressing or trying to address those sites? Okay.
I think, we have, we have a plan, it needs to be updated, but there are still areas like the Bowls. There are areas across the street, that whole line of apartments that are in very bad shape. There's capital areas in East Ridge and the Lake, the Lake Luff and North Oakland site and the dry cleaners. I mean, be proactive with planning on what we want to do there. I'm getting what we want, yeah.
So your objective would be to, to be proactive about some of the sites that have already been identified?
Correct.
And then, did you already go?
Can I ask, are you talking about regulations or are we talking about incentives?
Nope, we're not.
We don't have to get there.
Nope, we're just talking about, and you've already gotten some. I think that increase of tax base is based on people's concern about, is another way of addressing affordability. Okay, so we made it around. That's great. Some overlap, not a whole lot.
And I'm not sure we have complete agreement.
Okay, oh, no, we absolutely don't.
I think we did on...
Do you want to see like a show of hands for each of these? There you go.
Well, let me, let me clarify these first, make sure I got them down. First bullet was maintaining historic nature of buildings.
And does that mean just not letting people knock down buildings? Or does that mean putting up, taking, creating?
You know, I meant it a little more broadly, like, like that even if somebody built something new, for example, like the apartments on Wilson, that are the new development proposed on Wilson, that it has a very modern look that I'm not sure fits in with, you know...
See, I disagree with that.
See, even with, I mean, I think both, both would need to maintain our existing older buildings and I think new development needs to kind of fit with that theme, yeah.
I disagree with that.
So anybody, any agreement with that in the interest? Okay, next.
Okay, next is diverse community economically, racially, and socially.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Just general theme. Next bullet, diversify zoning codes and land use.
Does that mean, does that mean, like, I'll...
You said more than that.
Yeah, it needs to be updated. As an example, the specific sites that we're talking about, if that site were to be developed as just a single parcel, that's, that's just, that you're limited to that. But if a developer knew, they could purchase up the ten properties around it and put together a proposal that would allow them to develop... and put together a proposal that would allow them to develop a larger parcel. Because we have single-family zoning in that right next door to what is a mixed-use zone.
So allow some more flexibility.
Allowing, but that's just an example.
Yeah.
You had said rules of the road, which I thought is good. Be clear on the rules of the road.
Be clear on the rules.
So that developers understand that and the community understands.
Basically, you're looking at the building map? Is that what you're saying with the height map? Or the, or the types of zones that are next to each other?
Well, if all you're developing is a, is a 200 by 200-foot parcel and you have the ability to expand that parcel through acquisitions, it might make more sense to a developer to do that. But they, they need to know they have the ability to change that zoning.
And before that, we have to go through the exercise of looking at current zoning and deciding which and getting agreement on that. So if we.
We're going to do that, right for during, at the end, we talked about that during the conference last time?
Correct. Excuse me, the language chapter was one of the highest priorities of comprehensive planning of the year.
But again, the high level of public purpose was clear rules of the road for people to talk. Who's in favor of that?
I think.
If we're talking about specific sites, yes, because I don't know how you give someone, unless we do a whole new comprehensive development map of the village, I don't know how you do that.
It sounds like they're working on that. It sounds like they're working on that. We can't lay down and get it.
Yeah, I think it really makes sense for these minor six sites that are still left, absolutely, yes.
And that's what we did with the Metro Market and.
And we should do that.
The Life Force.
Yeah.
And it was, you know.
I have an opposed to guideline. That is a good idea.
A ringing endorsement.
Okay, guidelines, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next one. Housing for seniors affordable. Is there more definition?
It's kind of like a cycle too, I think.
Yes.
So seniors go to where they belong, so single families are free.
Okay.
Yeah, you could increase the, the number of village residents just by freeing up single-family homes by thousands.
That's true. Or 2.7 or whatever.
I mean, if you build. Senior living.
If you built one and two-bedroom condos, for instance, and freed up a four-bedroom home, those seniors would have options to give up their home and stay within the community.
But I mean, do we know that seniors, if we build one and two-bedroom condos, do we know that seniors would, you know, rush to move to that much?
We have evidence of that.
Could we create a market for this one?
Eastwood, Edgewood Place, are both?
Well, again, some of that, to me, that's where the tactics are. I don't think we need to address tactics tonight. To me, the question is, do we want to create the ability for people to stay in the community throughout their life? Right, is that, is that where, that they don't have to move out or, I thought that's what we were saying, that they want, we want people to be able to transition within the community.
That's your objective and, right, so the objective from there, decide on how you can facilitate that should you choose to.
Yes. I've, I've got here encourage housing options for seniors. But we want to include the transition phrase.
What transition? The life cycle.
Just moving to a different type of how, calling.
Wait, who, I, you know, I'm going to put that, I'm going to put that in there because it's, well,
because it also sort of implies that, you know, we've got to get a little bit on it, you know, I need to move. But I, I think if there were options, then, you know.
Encourage housing options for seniors, that's, yes, yeah.
But I think, yeah, we would definitely need to like understand what, what that kind of option, what that looks like.
Totally, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so show of hand?
Yeah.
All right, next bullet. Find and develop programs to help current businesses.
Oh, I forgot, was that mine?
I think so.
And this will be for it after this.
Did I, did I say it right? It says, it's, let me say it again. Find and develop programs to help current businesses.
Okay, I'll address both of the ones that I talked about. So that one is more geared towards non-real estate development, so I don't know that we need to get into that if we're just talking about real estate development today. That could be saved for a different day. But the real estate development I'm talking about for seniors was that not only, they're saying that 30% of our population will be seniors, you know, growing over the next five to 10 years in the housing study. And with that comes special needs for seniors for housing, you know, so building a senior affordable, you know, some sort of like workforce affordability for seniors and potentially, you know, affordable housing is a market study, so some sway, so that they can have accommodations that they need to stay here and then that frees up housing stock. The main thing this study said was that if we don't, it's not that we need more housing stock for more teachers, it's that if we don't grow somewhat, that we are, housing will be just astronomically expensive. So the pricing of the housing will skyrocket. I don't know, I don't know much about that, but that was the biggest.
So the next bullet.
So did we get agreement on the?
We did get agreement on that.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, so President Rossick, we got agreement on the, on the one that you put to.
So what about workforce housing? That was the next one.
I don't think that we need the criteria, but I mean, I think at this point, we don't need to sort of make that decision, but we should just do a show of hands. Is that a priority? I mean, it's kind of similar to.
Do you know what it is?
Sorry, we're trying to get, there's a tornado. So show of hands around that workforce housing as a primary objective?
What is it?
There's a half, there's a half hand.
I don't know what workforce housing, what you're saying it is.
Yep, well, you're the one that put it on. Okay, so we're going to leave it off for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why?
In.
There's no one voting for it.
Yep.
I understand that, but what were you voting for? Define it for us?
It was your list, what is it?
I'm Catholic, so it's.
Well, then it's not on the list. We're moving on.
It's not, we, yeah, we're just getting.
We're moving on. Next one.
We're just trying to, to get.
Hey, President, what, what were you referring to? Because I think you had brought up the workforce housing as an option.
I do, yep. So there's not.
As a primary purpose.
Power, then I don't think our community would be receptive to many of this, so how is this possible? Then there's another tier that's called like for teachers, there's a certain percentage, I don't know, 60% of the median housing code, do you know where?
It's, it's a moderate.
You're probably roughly 80%, but I honestly don't really know where.
But it's 60.
Right, where tax credits aren't necessarily issued and that's the level where typically you, and that to me is where we, where they're at the need. But until we understand what workforce housing means, like everyone has things, understanding of it, it's hard to vote on.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
The next was, I don't think I got it described correctly, but it was generally, we've got to increase the number of housing units if we're going to drive any retail, commercial, additional investment of retail, commercial, but better define that.
I don't know what that, I know what I was trying to say. I mean, it kind of incorporates everything that's on the board, so.
But you were talking larger, higher density, higher income levels that would make a difference.
My point was, I don't see much in having, increasing the housing unit having much effect unless it's a significant amount of housing units.
You didn't think there was the appetite in the community to do that?
I don't see it, no, but.
Your goal, I think, was to have people spend more money in the community.
Basically, putting more people, a significant amount more people in the village would have an economic.
Which is the public.
Would have an economic, a significant economic development.
Yep, yep.
Hard to it, yes.
So how would I better describe that? Increase population, is that really the best solution?
John, are you saying like, it's not, it's a waste of time basically if we are giving major account bills instead of unless we are also carrying out the decrease of residential, you know, higher density residential? I think that's what I'm hearing and I agree.
Kind of, yeah, like.
Yeah.
It's correlated.
Yeah, right. It, it's all related and correlated and if we really want to see significant, and I use that word, I mean, significant increases in any of this stuff, you have to have a significant number of more people living here.
So public purpose would be putting resources into growing the population to increase traffic, the customer base of the market.
Increase the population.
It's quite significant, adding a major chunk of population, which would, you know, negatively impact congestion but would positively impact school enrollment.
Exactly, right.
So I mean, I think.
And I don't know what majorly is.
Encouraging growth, very encouraging growth, right. You're encouraging growth, you're receptive to it, you're opening the doors to growth. And the only, but the only way to do, we have so few sites, the only way to do that is to very.
Like Oakland, you're saying the same objective, but you can accomplish that by bringing in a daytime population to spend.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true too. But I'm talking about, I guess I was talking about residents.
So maybe we want to talk about growth, both kinds of growth, population growth, but also job growth. Because that would be daytime, potentially.
Yes, but that would be.
Would you take friendly amendment to?
Yeah.
All right, let's go. Show of hands, open to growth.
That's what we're saying, open to growth.
Open to growth. All right, we got four in the room, no, five in the room, four in the room. Okay, anybody on the phone? Open to growth, job growth, residents growth?
You know, I don't think either of them, but like a hotel would also bring in, I'm afraid of a specialty hotel on the floor.
That's great, growth, that's growth.
That would be a destination attraction.
Sounds like we got five. Anybody else? Trustee Mark, can we take you on growth?
He said yes.
He said yes. We have agreement. That is the number one public purpose.
It growth.
Growth.
I have baked that in.
See?
We came around, let's see what.
Okay, so, okay, so you guys are all saying that you support a high-density residential development of thousands of new residents. That's.
No, still.
No, defining campaign.
It was a variety.
That's what he discussed though, that's.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why we toned it down and modified.
Because I, I don't, I think, I mean, it's great if that's what you believe, but I think, I think we have a lot of public.
Oh, I know we will. I know we will. So what we're looking for here is just general public objective, like public purpose objectives.
Just for discussion.
But just for discussion.
But I mean, there were ones that we're saying we agree with and support.
Right, oh, I thought you raised your hand on this one. No, I, oh, sorry, I.
An example of the hotel that's.
So we're not getting it.
A boutique hotel, that would, that's not going to bring a ton of new traffic, but it would bring visitors that would come and spend money, whether it's reunions or, or wedding receptions or whatever it might be.
Or IP also. Their parents and their senior housing.
Yeah, and.
Another option.
But, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying that's, that's something that would kind of fit into that description.
Three, four, five, six, on that one. And I'm not trying to, I'm just really trying to move on here. I don't, I'm not trying to win anything, I'm just trying.
That one's kind of broad, we'll need to work on that one a little bit to.
I was joking, yeah.
Okay, what I've got here is increase population.
We said open to growth.
Open to growth, yeah.
Yeah.
Open to growth.
Yeah, that could be population, that could be employment, that could be.
And I'm not advocating a 2,000 unit apartment complex.
Look at the camera.
They'll be a little schnippik.
Since we have.
Maybe over a few years.
Since we only have two people in the audience and they are oncoming trustees, is there anything that you want to?
I, I would personally echo a lot of what you guys are talking about. I would, I would also put emphasis on, on thinking, forward-thinking with green infrastructure and, you know, more environmental sustainability practices within, within the community as a whole, business and residential.
Great point, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And I would definitely support growth. I think that, to me, that means vibrancy. And that does not necessarily mean a huge population growth. I have, I would have a big problem with a, trying to hugely increase the population count in the village because that's one of the reasons I love it is because it is still a village and the more you add that density and those people, the traffic, the congestion, I'd have a problem with that. I think we, I would go with vibrant, a growth towards vibrancy than not.
How do you have more vibrancy with a single one of people?
Well, I like the idea about being a destination too, you know, for.
That's more people.
How?
Coming into shop, coming into.
But if you had a boutique hotel, then.
Coming into a fitness center, coming into a nail salon, you know, I mean, you know.
But isn't that, increase all those things you said, just that you don't want?
It could, it could increase some traffic.
I think the, I think the one thing.
Gets more human seen as blocking the streets.
Maybe parking should be a priority, including parking.
Yep, I think office, I think daytime office spaces is. Daytime office spaces is critical. I think we have, we are, we do not have, we do not have a lot of office, office space here. Yeah, desirable office space. So I think, you know, thinking about how we can create more desirable office space where people are coming here during the day in Ede, Blue Zag or Benjies or Metro Mark, I think would be really important for, you know, the growth of our business district.
And then I think public transportation comes into it, you know, we want them to use the bus, right? And maybe this has to do with keeping, you know, the, the bus line on wheels to drive. You know, a lot of that is economically driven. The economy was doing well, more people had cars, facial was not doing well. I think there's a lot of reason why that Wilson Drive line did not do well after today and yesterday, who knows? But I think public transportation and the intermodal, you know, the different modes of traffic has to be, is something that we would want to encourage, not just all cars.
So do we want to add anything?
I think that's enough.
That's enough.
That's a lot.
It's enough. We did, we have through one round of something.
Look, down here, we have affordable senior accessible housing. Is that what you're, similar up here?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the bar?
And, and well, the, I'm trying to remember who brought it up. Intentional and proactive for identified sites focused on.
Trustee Mark on the.
Oh, definitely.
I agree with that, the primary areas.
Proactive.
Yeah, that was more generally, not just specifically for.
Right. So, did kind of everybody read that? Maybe we merge that with this other.
That is the job of the CDA, so if you see, you know, better.
So what, and the last one was?
Increase tax base, which is kind of related to the growth.
So you do want to increase tax space?
No, she's motioning, oh, sorry, I thought you were motioning to adjourn. One second.
Increasing the tax base.
Okay.
When they're putting your yard, do you want that?
I, you were just joking about that. The increased tax base, that's kind of related to this open to growth.
Yeah, I think it is too.
Yeah, the investment side.
Hold it in, yep.
Yep.
That's great. Okay. Well, seems like the senior housing and diversity and.